Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands O nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and just.
With pledge out of the way, I'd like to request approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with item A crossed off of it. I'll second it.
The first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, approval of prior meeting minutes, approval of the regular meeting minutes of the January 5th, 2022 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve of it.
Second. Have a first and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Communications? The communications? We didn't have a sign-in sheet for public comment. Does anyone like to make public comment at this time? Mrs. Solberg?
Would we love to make any public comment right now?
We have time reserved if there's something on the agenda that you'd like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Victoria Solberg, Melrose Place.
That's all.
Yeah, I came, I've been looking into this Melrose Place Planned Community, and I live there. And I signed, when I bought my house, I signed this document that talks about Melrose Place, and what it's supposed to do, and what it's supposed to be. And it was set up by Mr. Filino Udoffo, and I'll call him Udoffo out of respect, because I think he really did try to do a nice, build a nice development. So anyway, and so we have this document. And it turns out that the homeowners association was never developed for different reasons, and I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know nearly what the reasons were. But after five years of being building property on it, it should have been turned over to the homeowners association. And I believe this is correct, I'm not an attorney, but this is what I found out. So that wasn't done, and then we've had trouble with stormwater. And so I was advised that it still has to be done. And then everyone who bought a property there, in both the stores and houses, signed these, and that means they're a member of the homeowners association. And they will have to pay whatever bills come in for it, no matter whether, no matter what, because that's the way it says. And I think a lot of people here didn't want to object to what's going on, because they don't want to run up big bills, but the way I look at it, no one can get out of it. And we need to have somebody look into this, I believe. And also, I would like to say that everyone who bought houses there were told that it was for single-family housing, and it was going quiet, and nice, and peaceful. And like, I've lived there for six years, and it's pretty much that, except for the building. And that's common. But the whole thing is, you now, you people in Vanquish Township, Board of Supervisors, not Board of Supervisors, Board of Planning Board, and the Filinos that are remaining, want to come in and change all that. And there are many, many people in this little development, and all this was to be 54 houses, according to this. And apparently, some things were changed, and I don't know anything about the people that changed it. And we should have some say in it, I believe. Everybody that bought a house there has put a lot of work and trouble and everything else in it. And they don't want to have to get up and try to fight traffic, increase traffic, which is what you're doing to us. And you're making it no longer a single-family housing, you're making it into, or the proposal is, I believe, is to make it into more apartments, more townhouses, you know, stores that have two stories on them, you're gonna have kids running around there, it's dangerous, it's down by the roads, we've been through this law. And I, we just think they're not giving us any say, they're taking away what many people put into for their retirement homes.
Well, I understand, and I'm gonna cut you off. We have no proposal before, no, there has been no application made in the township.
May I talk after the proposal again?
Well, we'll have, there certainly you can comment later during the meeting.
Well, I have nothing to say, and before you would let anybody talk for anyone at the time, and now you're cutting me off.
Well, I just don't see, I understand your point, we're acknowledging-
That's one point, I have many points.
Well, please continue.
Okay. So I was advised by an attorney who was, who works, you know, with developments and whatnot, that the thing we have to do is to hire a lawyer and see where our development is. Maybe it's not ready for a homeowners association yet, okay? And maybe it's well cast too, but we're gonna have to organize. And I just think somebody should look into it, okay? And I would like that to be the proposal, do you think to be that?
That's not anything the township would do, ma'am. You, as a responsible property owner in that development, you can get together with your fellow residents in that development and hire an attorney, but it is not the township's responsibility-
But you don't even know what's going on, and you're proposing an overlay that's gonna do away with what we have to say.
But we already had the solicitor look into this subject matter, and they presented a response to us months ago that said this was outside of our bounds to look into this matter, it's a matter between the property owners, the homeowners association, between those entities, you guys have to take it up.
Well, there's some questions on what you said, so I think it wouldn't hurt to have somebody else look at it.
Then I think that needs to go to the supervisors at their next meeting, they're the only ones that I believe can-
Yeah, we're merely a recommending body to the Board of Supervisors, we have no authority. Any decision to take action is made by the Board of Supervisors, not by the planning commission. We are solely a recommending body to the Board of Supervisors in planning matters.
Well, you should be planning before you find out what you're planning.
Ma'am?
We know what we're planning.
Well, we're, we are currently looking at an overlay district. There's a potential for revision to our township zoning ordinance, and we're solely looking at adding a provision that would allow an overlay district on a portion of the zoning map. We have no criteria at this point, we're just beginning that, you know, to look at that.
Okay.
So it's very, very early, and I urge all the residents at this point, we have no idea, I mean, you all know there are undeveloped commercial lots at the front of your development. It just so happens that, you know, looking at an overlay district may allow additional uses or changes to how that undeveloped land is used, that's all. So your input during this planning process, as we're starting to look at the overlay district, is very important. So we welcome you and your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? We're gonna be, we have a few items on the agenda, so we have-
If it's a topic that's on the agenda, I'd like the whole comment till then, so we can at least let these other individuals get on with their evenings.
Again, is there anyone who would have public comment regarding items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'd like to proceed with our first item of business, which is a discussion of Blandon Menonite Fellowship proposed parking area plan.
Good evening, Chris Valankey-McCarthy Engineering. We are back here in December, had a very thorough discussion about the parking lot, took your comments from your engineer, made the revisions, got the ENS approvals and all the other approvals that we need, resubmitted that, Tom has a letter before you, and I have a couple of official waiver requests, and also extension upon if we need one to act on tonight, so with Tom, did you wanna-
Sure.
-go through the letter?
I will. So the board should have a letter dated January 31st, the second review of the Blandon Menonite Church proposed parking area. Page one, reviewed what was submitted and reviewed, the background of the property. Page two, zoning review, discuss matching up the seating requirements with the parking requirement, I think that's easy for the applicant to do. Item two is a landscaping requirement, I believe the next item that should be done to address that is that we meet with, or the engineer meets with the applicant, we look at the site and see what the existing vegetation is, and see if the existing vegetation meets the landscaping requirement.
Yeah, our response was exactly that, we felt that the existing vegetation, we're maintaining the outer boundary, so in the parking lot, as you are aware, exists, we're just basically paving it. So I will be, you know, glad to leave with Tom, if Tom says, "I need to put a tree here," we will do that, so it's very subjective as to where they're aiming, so.
But in the end, you say you will comply with that, so it's not a defer variance or is there anybody?
No, no, it's, we will comply, we're trying to make it as pleasant as possible in the area, we're not there to be in the way of anything.
Good. Moving on, on page two is the subdivision and land development requirements. Item one is a waiver requirement to process the plan as a preliminary slash final plan. Item two is that the ownership acknowledgement of plan and offer of dedication needs to be signed. Item three, the plan certificate of accuracy needs to be signed and sealed. Item four is the surveyor certification. Going on to page three. Plan needs to be recorded, proof of recording. Item six, is there is any, and there are a little bit of improvements that require financial security, an improvement agreement and financial security is required. Item seven, I believe, is something the applicant wants to discuss. Item seven deals with the cartway width and the right-of-way along Chestnut Street, existing is 20 feet in a cartway and 33 feet of right-of-way. The regulations call for a minimum of 24-foot cartway and 53-foot right-of-way.
The, what I wanted to say there, I, you're right, it's a very narrow street and so forth, we're not really making a large development, like I said, it is an existing parking lot, your homes are right up against the road anyway, so that's why we're maintaining that 33-foot. The road has enough width, if the township wanted to widen it to 24, two feet on either side, so we did set our parking lot back to allow for that two-foot half, as a matter of fact, one of the comments was for our driveway to pave that two feet, which we've done. So we have basically given you a 12-foot lane on our side, we can give you a 12-foot lane on the other side, and that's how you get your 24 feet out of it. So it's all, it's all there available to you. But just following up with Tom, I do have here two waiver requests regarding, one as is planned being a preliminary final plan request, as we discussed last month, and also the waiver request for the issue regarding this road right-of-way, additional road right-of-way.
The board want a plan, have the plan open to look at?
I'd like to see it, just because I'd like to see-
Yeah, kind of this right-of-way part of it. So we have, this is actually the road, railroad right through here, so there's no reason to widen here, up through here is a couple lots, and then the road comes back through here, which is additional, you know, runs around with, homes right up again, so if you really want to dedicate, you're only gonna have a small area of dedication if you have that 53 through here, and I don't know how it even matches up with the remaining properties. But the road, I believe, is wide enough for any improvement if you were to go to 24 feet.
I'm okay with the 53 and weeding the right-of-way part, but I'd like to see the 24-foot of the road, what are your guys' thoughts?
Yeah, I don't think it's, I mean-
It's moot point, you're not gonna develop this area, like you're saying.
No.
But I would like to see the road be more than just one passing lane, you know.
It's only gonna be along the frontage of their property, correct.
That's all, we're, what they're doing already, in our driveway, we're providing the two-foot already, here in our driveway, so it's basically 12-foot lane is what we are allowed for in front of our driveway.
Yeah, but my concern is people walking across, you know, people walk across, then they gotta walk along, then they walk along, and then they gotta walk across, right now they're walking in the driving lane.
Right.
This has been a big conversation, we've had numerous parts of this township multiple times, you and I, Tom, have had this conversation numerous times, where-
Especially when there's no sidewalk.
For so long, we weaved sidewalks, and then we, you know, we have narrow roads, and everybody's walking in the street, especially where people are gonna park on one side and have to stage or queue or something to get across to the other side, I'd just like to see that four feet of it. I really would like that.
We do provide a crosswalk, you know, for our, to the church as-
I guess the critical element, Chris, is the width of the pavement of Chestnut Street, you know, establishing the 24 feet.
The width of the street is 20 feet right now, so when you widen the road, it's two-foot either side, so on our side of the road, we are providing that two feet.
In your driveway, not the frontage.
Not the frontage.
Yeah, it's-
Is there a reason, like in our ordinance for Saturday, they don't have to do sidewalk?
No, that's a requirement also. I mean, that's something that curb, curb and sidewalk technically is something that is required or could be asked for, that would be another item of discussion.
It seems like a-
There's no sidewalks.
Yeah, it's not.
It seems like a very, a very- You know, the edge of cartway that's indicated on the plan is really all over the place, you know, it would almost be best, you know, in my opinion, on the north side of that driveway, because that's, the church is located to the north side, so the northwest side of, you know, basically that, the frontage here from this, from your driveway entrance to the property line to, to, you know, widen that pavement.
I mean, the reason I asked about the sidewalk is because I think in my opinion it's one or the other.
Sidewalk or widen the pavement?
Yeah, you widen the pavement, or you do the sidewalk.
So if you're requesting just a sidewalk, just in, to the south, I guess, to the north in this case, what would you think?
Just along the north part.
You know, my thought is it's-
To allow that progression of people from-
From one to the other, I mean, I just don't wanna have people having to queue over there, you know, imagine people coming into park here, and they're driving, and people standing, we get it down here at the church all the time, too.
Sidewalk to stand on, waiting for the traffic.
Two additional feet, I mean, we're going about another 50 feet down, I guess, I'm not having a problem with that, that's what you're looking for.
So you're gonna, you're gonna connect the driveway to the-
To the property line, yeah, that's what they're talking about.
So that people walking out of their cars and walking out to the church will then be able to sidewalk to go before-
They'll be off the side of the car.
Off the road.
They'll be off the car, yes.
I think if you're gonna ask us to support the right-of-way width and the sidewalk request, then we'd like to see that area paved north of the, of the entrance.
And I am proposing two feet to get it to the 12-foot lane that's necessary?
I think just to mention it then, and you'll show that you have 24 across, because there's already, it looks like extra width on the church side.
On the other side, yes.
Yeah, just to mention it.
Okay, I can do that.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Like you said, it's not a heavily trafficked area, but I mean, you see what happens with the churches, people get out of cars, they queue there, because it's a lot of people coming in or leaving at the end of service, it just, I don't like having them stand on the road, so.
I mean, I think, you know, do you guys think we're all on board with that idea?
It's sensible.
Yeah.
My suggestion too is that you actually take the right-of-way though, have them dedicate that, only because if you, and I don't know the area, if this ever gets widened in the future and we have to do it, you're then paying for that land instead of then giving it to-
I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're ever gonna have that property over there.
You're right against the railroad tracks, so.
Yeah, this isn't a part of the community that has developed all the land, I mean, this is over in the old part of town, very small properties.
Right.
You're not gonna have development, and even if you did, it's-
It's minor.
This property is probably one of the last ones over there, that you could actually build something on. So, it has no traffic probably other than during services. But I appreciate your sentiment. Tom, I didn't see anything here on sidewalks.
There's nothing there on sidewalks, otherwise I would have asked for it.
Yeah.
But I'll, I think, I'm in my waiver request to include a deferral on sidewalks, that's what I could do there.
Yeah, if you just updated your waiver request.
Is that gonna change that requirement then? Okay, item eight, a dimension for the location, the first parking spot, so everyone knows where we're starting. Specification number nine for the road widening detail. Item 10 is a kind of a carryover from the zoning requirement on the landscape and screening, we'll meet with the applicant and we'll look at the existing-
Would that mean, would then be a waiver as well?
The way it's worded is may.
It's may, okay.
May, so-
I just wanted to make sure next time you had them all on the letter if needed.
Item 11 is signage for the crosswalk. Stormwater management review.
Everything is just signatures?
Everything is just signatures on the O and M agreement and the B and T, that's correct. So that's everything for the review then.
I mean, I think if he comes back with the zoning issue taken care of, and upper minor modifications to his waiver request, that next month or whenever that would be-
I would request a conditional on that, because we will-
Yeah, given the zoning topic.
But again, I'm not sure it's a real issue, because I tend to comply, whatever Tom is gonna ask for this screening, we're gonna, we're gonna do, so.
Tom, how do you feel about not having the formal waivers?
The waivers are in there.
The biggest thing is, is that this is a preliminary slash final.
Right.
If this were a preliminary plan, I would recommend additional approval, because we're gonna catch it at the final. Since this is a preliminary slash final, this is a one-shot done type deal plan, I would feel more comfortable if we had a clean letter and a clean plan to present to the Board of Supervisors.
I have to agree with Tom on this one, Chris, I think, that being said, you know you have the sentiment of us to make the recommendation at the next meeting if you can take care of these items and get us a cleaned up waiver letter, so.
Okay, then with that, I will need an extension, then of time, so here's my request for a grant, and your extension, Tom, your recommendation to the supervisors.
I recommend, I recommend the supervisors approve their extension request.
Any questions, discussions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Give me a call, we'll get out there.
Next item of business on the agenda is discussion of Georgia mushroom, Project Titan C.
We're in the Scott Miller with Scott Stevens McCoy, gonna hand out some plans real quick and then we can dive into the review letter room. So basically, we're here tonight, we would conditionally approve the pilot plan for this project a while ago. Due to construction cost issues, they've reevaluated the building, and there's been modifications to the building, which required slight modifications to the land development. So, and I've got the two preparations here, so you can kind of see what exactly the proposed changes are. So this plan is what's being presented this evening. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
And then, this one is the one that was previously, and I think I'm one of them, so.
That's okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood exactly what was being proposed as part of this. So basically, what, the building has shifted a little bit, and there has been a reduction in size, the building size actually reduced by 5,700 square feet. Unfortunately, the way the program they had set up, it kind of, their production kind of rotated a little bit, so that required the shift in the building, and therefore, due to the shift in the building, some of the stormwater conveyance and some of the utilities had to be adjusted. So that's the, pretty much the extent of the changes. We were able to push it back a little bit from the property line, so the retaining wall also moved, and also had to be redesigned, so it allowed a little bit more extra room for the project site. So those are the substantial changes, and again, you can compare the two areas of the plan, exactly where the footprint was, and it's also being phased. And the Phase One pilot plant for this project is definitely smaller than it was for the original Phase One. So this was the original Phase One project, it's three phases, this is actually two, one Phase One, and then full build-out. That constitutes most of the changes regarding the plan itself, the stormwater system, for the most part, the driveways, the utilities coming in are basically the same, so.
Scott, I see you say utilities, I see that it looks like the original design had two sets of generator pads and stuff, and now you're down to one, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So the coverage has stayed the same, there wasn't any changes in that. We have refiled a major amendment to the Perkins County Conservation District as part of the, and PDS permit, because again, those were changes to the boundaries, it actually reduced a little bit to the air of disturbance, and we're submitting this again as a final plan, basically a revised final plan, which you had previously, you know, conditionally approved, we were basically looking at you to make the same recommendations that were previously granted with this revised plan. And we do have a review letter from Systems Design that we looked at, we got it this afternoon. For the most part, we'll be able to take care of all those items, but we'll be glad to go over those items this evening if you have any questions.
I don't think that there's anything outstanding here that we haven't seen before that they've addressed in the past, so it's a pretty clean plan, matching what the revision was from the final plan that was approved previously to this revised plan. The stormwater in disturbed area is unchanged, their footprint is actually a little bit smaller, and they've changed a little bit of their way they're operating and working on the facility itself, so I don't have the need to go review with you everything in the letter, if you don't, they, I believe we're gonna comply with everything.
That is correct, and our intent is to address everything, resubmit, and be back to the March meeting, so you'll all have a clean letter to make a recommendation for the project.
So I would not, again, I would not make a recommendation tonight, they can get this review and clean up the plan, and we'll have just administrative requirements for the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors then.
Yeah, good.
I'm good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So our next item on the agenda is discussion of application for overlay district, and C1 zoning will allow multi-family housing.
Okay, so, if you want to have a copy of the grant, this is a preliminary document at this time. Needs discussion and it needs to go back and forth, so there's not gonna be any action tonight. I also passed out a copy of the zoning map, which has the proposed overlay district locations marked on the plan. That will be the crosshatched area. So that is one of the items for discussion per board. So let me, I guess, review the plan, the proposed overlay district. I don't know any easier way of doing it than reading it and going through it, and I'm gonna have to take this off and do that. Alright, so this is gonna be a commercial overlay district. The first paragraph is the purpose. In addition to local commercial zoning district C one established by this chapter, there shall be established a commercial overlay zoning district. Subparagraph B, the commercial overlay zoning district shall not be independent zoning district. It shall be a set of special zoning regulations to be applied over and above the zoning regulations otherwise controlling upon a tract of land as enabled by, described by section six oh five of the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code. District upon which the overlay district is superimposed is here, is referred to herein as the underlying district. The underlying district is what is the crosshatched area on your map. The purpose of this overlay district is to provide a greater variety of residential uses within the township by permitting certain uses or combinations of uses not otherwise permitted in the underlying district. And by permitting a greater density of development than that which would be otherwise permitted in the underlying district. So as to promote the public health, safety or general welfare of the residents and inhabitants of the township. It is further intended to provide an area where multi-family dwelling and certain commercial uses can be combined and interact together. Subparagraph D, the commercial zone, the commercial overlay zoning district shall be available throughout those portions of the local commercial zoning district C one that are located on the Park Road corridor and bounded by Golden Road to the east and the Richmond Township boundary line to the west. So that's the first place I'd like to stop and discuss with the board, your thoughts on the zoning district.
I think, you know, we had a conversation at the very beginning here, going back to our previous conversation, and we had initially thought this to extend much further than Goulden.
Yes, and I think that, and I remember that conversation, then we get out of the C one zoning district.
Right.
That's, we stopped it there for now, for discussion.
Yeah, I think our theory was to continue this all the way up to the school property on both sides, and obviously leave that little area around Phillip Court that doesn't really make sense in that R two area there. But the bounded by the railroad tracks, those R twos on the, I'll call it the south side of Park Road, as well as, you know, the municipal authorities property, the post office, the school, and then, you know, where the bank is, where the antique shop is, things like that, I know for the years we've had people try to look at different uses for that antique property too. So, I think, Tom, the initial thought was to carry it all the way up to there. Considering just future, I mean, there's no guarantee that, you know, buildings will always be the buildings they are. The trouble we have in a lot of our communities when schools have to be converted into something else, and God forbid that happens, but just including that flexibility a while I think makes sense. So, I'd like to see that changed so it's not just that little area, to be honest with you.
Right.
I mean, I think one of the goals here is considering future options that reduces the amount of entry and exit points along Park Roads through consolidations and things like that that could happen.
We're gonna, we're gonna jump over this.
Yeah.
That area there, but we're gonna include this area?
Yeah.
And then include this area?
Mm-hmm.
And continue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one area just doesn't make sense.
No. Okay.
I don't even think any of those properties actually access more borough. That's kind of one of the key differentiating factors to those properties, is they don't actually access Park Road. Most of them access Phillip Court or Goulden itself, so. That's kind of one of my reasons for not really including them, is they're not causing any of the traffic endangerment we see as it is.
Does it stop, does the western boundary, Jason, become the limits of the school district property?
I mean, that's a good question.
Because, I mean, if we, on the north side of the, of Park Road, you know, then we're into the cemetery and the church property, but that doesn't, that's not gonna change.
That's not gonna change ever.
So, really, if we were to limit the, yeah.
Draw a line. Yeah, I don't know what's ever gonna happen with that Turbey Hill property.
Right.
You know, it's actually a way bigger parcel than where the gas station is, if you actually think about it.
There's some depth to it.
But it's, I think it's always gonna stay some sort of gas station, so I don't think we need to include that in whatever we're doing here. It doesn't come alone to be something terrible at that intersection, to be honest. So, I like that idea, but I don't see any value in extending beyond that.
Okay.
I do believe, Tom, I think in paragraph D, isn't Goulden Road on the west and Richmond Township on the east?
Yeah, kinda.
I think north.
Yeah, I think you're right. I'm just looking at them now, trying to figure it out.
Richmond Township, these are just of us, so.
Yep. Okay, section, the next section will be titled permitted uses. Paragraph A, uses permitted by right. One, multi-unit dwelling and townhouse development. Item two, mixed use development consisting of commercial uses on the first floor and residential on the second floor. Paragraph, subparagraph three, apartments on the upper levels of buildings, conversion of existing commercial space on the upper floors shall be permitted as long as the commercial use is maintained on the first floor. And item four, land and buildings in the underlying local commercial C one zoning district may be utilized for any use permitted by right in the commercial overlay zoning district.
I'm not taking the lead. I'm not sure I've had enough time to really think through this section personally. I don't like them being used by right.
That's, I wasn't gonna put them there.
So.
I put them there, but for discussion, I think they should.
Yeah, I'd like to do a little more thinking on this subject, but I definitely don't want one, two, or.
Three.
Three.
Four would.
Four would stay as a used by right.
Yes.
What, what is, somebody's got to define multi-dwelling unit, because, I mean, you could take that in numerous directions, you can take, you know, somebody taking an existing house and, in the quarter and. You know, I don't know if we have a definition of that. I didn't like that.
But as you get into the letter, doesn't this help define?
No, it has, I think it has to be an actual defined term somewhere. It might be in there. Like I said, I had nowhere near enough time, we only got this at like three or three-thirty today, so. I think.
Yeah, this is a first blush.
Yeah, this is really us just opening up for the sign here, so I'm not, I'm not really thrilled on moving too deep into this tonight, but I think we owe it to everybody who showed up.
Multi-family is a defined term.
Oh, so multi-family, okay. I think definitely look at changing that word to match whatever the definition is.
Family dwelling is a term.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
Or getting a new term for defining.
Yeah, I don't like the word, I don't like the per multi-unit dwelling, to be honest with you.
Multi-family should be defined.
Yeah, should be defined, for sure. Tom, if I was gonna make you just a first blush recommendation, I would definitely put the second one, I think, the mixed use as a conditional use probably. And I would put the apartments in the upper level, but I don't like that wording there as a special exception. The first one, I'm still not sure, I gotta do some more thinking, but I'm not liking any of them as a used by right at all.
And we put it there for just to prompt your discussion.
Yeah, on that third one, what were you getting at with that? It seemed to say that you're taking an existing two-story commercial building and converting.
We do have existing buildings out there that, you know, some existing buildings.
None of them are two-story. I thought you might've been hinting at taking an existing commercial building and adding a second story. There's no two-story commercial buildings. That I can think of, I mean, somebody could prove me wrong someday walking up and down that corridor, but. But you could take something like the strip mall and add something on top. I think we gotta look back, because I don't think there's any two-story buildings on there in the corridor.
Okay.
Actually, three would also allow a third story, is that correct?
Well, that gets into stuff later, I don't think that's allowed later on, so I, I don't.
There's still limitations on building height.
Yeah, there's a height and there's a story and, like I said, not getting to read through these, I think we're all kind of caught up or.
So flipping over, then the next page, next page is area and bulk regulations, area and bulk regulations A one. Maximum residential net density is six units per acre.
Net or gross?
That's net. That is net.
Oh, yeah.
It's in the term.
Okay, thank you.
Item two, maximum mixed use net density with dwelling units above a commercial first floor use will be limited to four dwelling units per acre. Three, minimum lot area, one acre. Four, minimum lot width at street, one hundred feet. Minimum lot width at building line, one hundred feet. Minimum front yard, thirty feet. Minimum side yard each, fifteen feet. Minimum rear yard is thirty. Maximum extent of impervious surface is forty-five percent. Maximum building height is thirty-five feet, but not more than three stories. Minimum common open space requirement, fifty percent. The horizontal distance in feet at the closest place between any two principal buildings on the same lot shall not be less than the height of the highest building measured in feet, but in no case less than forty feet.
Yeah, these are a lot to dig into. I did make one really, I did look at one really, one or two really big ones quickly. This is a reduction of almost twenty percent for impervious cover compared to commercial, which I think is great. I think that's a huge thing and it helps with a lot of people's concerns of even the discussion. So, commercial allows a sixty-five percent impervious coverage, this is a reduction down to forty-five.
And a requirement of fifty percent of open space.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't check what the open space was.
Well, open space is defined, is a defined term, so.
So, but I mean, that's a huge percentage reduction just there, twenty percent of the property.
It is consistent, it is consistent with other.
Residential districts.
Well, not residential, but. Might be.
Yeah, I think it was.
It might be.
Commercial residential.
I used as a guide a lot of Wyomissing Borough and West Reading Borough, and I use those as guides. And fifty percent was a very, is a common requirement for open space for density and mixed commercial.
I mean, I like that it's a lot less impervious coverage, that's for sure, and I like the dedicated open space element, and I think that's a huge problem we have in a lot of our areas here, green space and connecting and all those kinds of things, so. I don't know that some of these numbers are realistic, but I think I need to sit down with the book and look at what some of our other districts are. I'd almost say I'd like to see a bigger parcel size, to be honest with you.
I would too, but that's not gonna meet up.
Well, if you combine multiple parcels, that's kind of some of the point of some of this, is to try to reduce the amount of entry-exit points through combining slots through redevelopment.
Yes.
So, I'm just saying, first blush, I think, one of the things I'd like to see, I'd like to see some sort of table given to us that compares this to the other districts we have in essence, just so it's easier to see. But also, I don't know how we do it, maybe by block or something, we kind of group those properties together to know what acreage is there. I mean, it's really hard to tell what kind of acreage is there on like a block basis, not individual parcels, but block-wise. Because it is hard to tell. I mean, that could be something that instantly kills the process, if we come back and go, oh, these blocks just aren't really even developable. We think they're these big combined sizes and they're really, they're really tiny ones. So I don't know if we can somehow come up with something that gives us, like I said, a block-based idea roughly.
We can give you a table of the property ID numbers and tell you what the acreage is on the property ID numbers.
I think that'd be helpful.
You'll be able to see.
Yeah, I'd like to just see something that gives us a rough idea.
Because you may find, it may take, you know, some of the smaller lots, it may take four, five, or more to get to that acre.
Yeah, it may take all, you know, ten of them, it's not even a puny, right. Yeah. But like I said, also just giving us something as a reference point, so we're not having a page between ten different chapters in our books, or even maybe the one out of Wyomissing that you used as the reference, just so we can see how it compares. I mean, the first one that I checked was impervious coverage, because I was like, we had this whole conversation, that we really wanted to see that reduced compared to commercial, and we wanted to see a big open space. So those were the two I kind of focused on.
Those are the two most important ones.
Yeah, I think so too, but.
Subparagraph B, required common open space shall be appropriate for recreational uses. A minimum of fifty percent of the required open space must be reserved and developed as active recreational use. Such space shall be designed for use by residents and development shall be improved and equipped by the developer in accordance with plans submitted and approved by the Township Planning Commission. It shall include such deed restrictions and other provisions so as to clarify the ownership of such facilities and to assure the perpetual maintenance, assigning such charges as may be necessary. To the greatest extent possible, open space shall be connected by sidewall trails to other open spaces within Maiden Creek Township. Subparagraph C, connection to public sanitary sewage and public water supplies servicing the entire development is required.
So, Tom, can, when you do your U P I thing, can you tell us that they're all connected? Because I don't know that they are.
Sewer and water is available.
Is it available for all those parcels along there?
Double check.
Can you double check that, because I know a lot of those old Land and Meadows properties are well.
Okay.
So can you just double check that? Maybe just talk to the authority?
Yep, I can, well, I have that.
Okay, okay. Because that could be another thing that kills a bunch of them, because I wouldn't want to do this if they're not on public waters.
That's required.
Landscaping, subparagraph D, screening planting shall be required in accordance with section twenty twenty sixty-four B two of this chapter. Other landscaping shall be provided in accordance with provisions of chapter one ninety of subdivision land enrollment. Subparagraph E, lighting for buildings, access ways and parking areas shall be so arranged as not to reflect toward public streets or residential structures either within the development or upon nearby properties. Next page, unless there's any comments.
The only thing I'm thinking is landscaping is, I definitely have a hesitation of that along the road. I'd like to know what those are.
Well, that's in the, that's in the other sections of the book, so we're saying you're landscaping in accordance with the landscaping.
The other sections, okay, I'll have to dig through those, like I said, I didn't get a time to pull all the stuff in reference and see what those look like.
Subparagraph F, design requirements. No structure containing townhouse units may contain more than six such units. Minimum width of townhouse units shall be twenty-four feet. No structure containing apartment units may contain more than twelve such units. Within a townhouse structure, no more than two consecutive townhouse units shall have the same setback, variation in setbacks shall be at least four feet. Area, yard areas separating structures from parking areas other than all lot parking spaces for an individual townhouse unit shall have a minimum width of thirty feet. The front building line of no more than two adjacent townhouse building groups may be on the same plane. All other buildings must have the front building line either on an arc or offset from adjacent buildings by at least five feet. Those regulations are consistent with your townhouse regulations in book.
That's what I thought, the old term.
Item G, parking facility. Vehicle or access shall be provided for each townhouse unit. Required parking shall be provided either on the lot, in a carport, or as an integral part of the unit, or in a joint parking facility for a group of townhouses with such deed restrictions. Or in a park, joint parking facility for a group of townhouses with such deed restrictions and cross easements as necessary to assure access and maintenance of such facility. Vehicular, vehicular access to the townhouse lot can be either from the front or rear. Use of rear alley access to units will require establishment of the before-mentioned cross easements or establishment of a homeowner's association. Again, that's consistent with your existing regulations.
I, I, I think, you know, as a more conversation here, I'd like to see rear access. Like through a rear alley. Instead of having them sitting on the front along a road or like that. It's also more aesthetically, you know, if you have all these full range of like parking kind of like.
It gets really difficult though for.
Right, but that, if you wanna build them.
Right.
Then you figure out how. I just, I, I like the idea of them being more rear accessing instead of front accessing. So that's kind of my thought on, on that. I'd like to see if that kind of directs them now. If they can't make it work, well then.
Right.
Then they're not going to be developing them.
I think the parking, if you're gonna have a parking, outside parking lot, that, the rear parking, I've seen that. But if it's gonna be a garage.
I've seen a lot of garage units in the rear.
Yeah, but I have both rear and or front. And also we requirement that fifty percent of the N units have to have side garages.
Yeah.
So, that's a.
I think this is a topic to really have some discussion on. Because it is a multi-faceted thing like Tom's saying.
Mm-hmm.
But I've seen a lot of communities where they, they, they're all rear entry for garage. Yeah, your, your doors and your sidewalks and stuff are on the front, but all the garages are in there. And they're in an alley.
You think these lots are deep enough to do that?
Yeah, a lot of them are pretty deep. But I, like I said though, I mean, this is kind of one of those things, if you can't come up with a design that does it, then you can't build. I mean, the, the goal here isn't to just allow anything built, it's to allow something that does fit the, you know.
Character.
Character, and, and it does provide a, I'm gonna call it a gateway in essence. You know, for people passing through, you know, you have thirty percent of people who pass through that township probably pass through on this road, so. Um, and like I said, one of my big drivers on this is to eliminate cars pulling out off and on of, of Park Road. I mean, I can't tell you the number of times that it's been a disaster for me. So, um, where you run up on somebody who all of a sudden stops and wants to get into the notary or.
Yep.
You know, even, even the Dollar General at times, you catch people just slamming on the brakes to make turn all of a sudden, so. Rear alley allows you to come off of a cross street, um, if one's in that area, so. I think it's something that as we work through this, I, I just would like to have it be something we discuss.
Yeah.
As we move through here, so I think there is some value to that.
Uh, moving forward with subparagraph G, item one, parking spaces, spaces shall be provided as required in section two thousand twenty sixty-one E four of this chapter. Common parking areas accessing public streets shall be set back from the property lines or street right-ofways, whichever is greater, a minimum of fifteen feet. Access roads within development shall be separated from all structures by less than fifteen feet. Parking lot shall be configured and located such that vehicles shall not converse onto public street. For a common parking lot, the point of access to the public street network, that access roads within development shall have a minimum width of twenty-four feet and maximum width of thirty feet. Subparagraph six, that end parking lot shall be designed and constructed with backup areas for the end stalls. Seven, all access roads and parking areas shall be permanently paved with a dust-free surface in accordance with chapter one ninety subdivision land involvement. Subparagraph eight, points of ingress and egress shall be configured and located such that vehicles entering or leaving the site shall not be obstructed by other vehicles pulling into or out of parking spaces. Common parking lots shall be landscaped in accordance with provisions of chapter one ninety. When townhouse units are provided with attached garages, fifty percent of the end unit garages shall be side entry. Any side entry garage shall have a backup area for the driveway. Subparagraph eleven, driveways for garage units should be of sufficient length, minimum of thirty feet. Permit the parking of vehicle in the driveway outside of the right-ofway of any public street. In the case of private streets serving a townhouse development, the vehicles cannot block or approach into any required sidewalk. Twelve, private roads may be developed to serve a townhouse development, however adequate provision must be made for the provision of sidewalks and pedestrian pathways. Provide for safe access to the public streets, to the access, to access school bus pickup points, to access recreation facilities and direct. As directed by the township, that should be, not end, as directed. Okay?
Adding a section or call out that references the loading-unloading requirement, since you did mixed use as part of this.
Uh, loading docks?
Well, whatever you would need for mixed use, some sort of loading-unloading area. Just referencing the section of our ordinance that has that, I think, you, you know, you don't have a lot of references. The other thing I'd like us to look into as part of this is if it is some sort of apartment, um, style, whether that's mixed use or whatever. If it's conditional use, maybe one of the conditions, or maybe here would be some sort of, um, I'll call it bonus, um, percentage that increases the amount of parking they have to have to account for visitors.
That's in, that's in the regulations.
Is it in there already?
That's in the parking regulations, yes.
That there are a certain number of visitor spots required?
Yep.
Okay. Because that's like usually the biggest problem.
Subparagraph H, permitted accessory uses. The following uses and facilities are permitted by right as accessory to a multifamily residential development. Subparagraph one, coin-operated washing and drying machines and vending machines dispersing beverages or cigarettes. Provided that such machines are centrally located in enclosed structure with access limited to residents of the development. Two, parking areas in our garages for use of residents and visitors. Three, recreational facilities as may be recommended by the township parks and recreation board. Four, one administrative office for use of a person or entity charged with managing the development. Five, one sample unit for public display.
Does anything in our ordinance require the partner to look at it and review it?
Um, they normally do review.
Residential, okay, I do. Because I definitely think, you know, one of the key concerns here is recreation.
Input on recreation.
Pedestrian mobility. I mean, I'd still love to see us as a township perform a viability study to improve pedestrian, or whatever you wanna call that, accessibility, given the number of, the lack of. Any sort of safe passage from our developments to our parks. I mean, I'd still well us to undertake some sort of study of how we can improve that in the long term, but, you know, that, 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 you know. Maybe as we go through this, we can come to that agreement to recommend to the supervisors to consider a study. I'd like to see us do that as well.
Subparagraph I, storage of trash and rubbish. All trash and rubbish shall be kept in airtight vermin-proof containers. Two, one accessory building may be erected for each multifamily residential structure for the storage of trash and rubbish containers. Interior storage areas for trash and rubbish shall be, shall at all times be kept in an orderly and sanitary fashion. For townhouse development, trash storage shall be provided internal to the unit or in enclosed porch or storage area. Subparagraph three, exterior storage areas for trash and rubbish containers shall be actively screened by landscaping and fencing as described in section two thousand twenty dash sixty-four of this chapter. Subparagraph J, site plan review and approval. All multifamily residential developments are either a land development or where the units are held in fee simple ownership by the resident, a subdivision. Approval, such. Approval, such development is therefore governed by the regulations of chapter one ninety subdivision of land development. No zoning, no zoning permit shall be issued for a multifamily residential development unless and until the owner or developer thereof has complied with all provisions of that ordinance and has received final approval for development under provisions thereof.
Some of the words, you can't convert a building without going through the process.
Right. Construction, all structures shall conform with the building regulations established by the state department of labor and industry as well as all federal municipal building regulations. Where there are conflicting regulations and more restrictive shall apply. Subparagraph L, traffic impact analysis. This is pretty long. And this is, uh, pretty much, um, for the most part, taken from other section of the regulations.
And all these points potentially would need an HOP anyway, because it's a state road.
Unless they're using existing, but.
But it's a change of use.
It could, we, we, uh, that can be pushed.
Require.
It can, it can be pushed to go back to the state.
I'd like to see that included, that anybody.
That takes this traffic analysis requirement, I think, covers that.
Okay, perfect.
Do you want to run through all those or any questions?
That was my only question.
So then we go to, uh, and open space. Requirements and specifications. The common open space shall be planned and located as a contiguous accessible area within development. B, s- 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 significant natural features shall be incorporated into the overall schematic of the design as common open space areas whenever possible. C, the area devoted to common open space shall be comprised of areas not less than fifty feet in width. And D, for all common open spaces, satisfactory written agreements approved by the main petanca for a supervisor shall be consummated for the perpetual preservation of the common open space.
This prevents, just for point of question, this would prevent the typical feed flow, correct?
Yes.
Because that's a huge problem we have, but, thank you.
Item O is an important item, deals with stormwater. Permanent management of stormwater runoff associated with any proposed lot subdivision or land development shall be controlled on the same lot development. Is to take place. This includes previous development obligatory to off-site stormwater facilities. Design of any temporary or permanent facilities or structures and the utilization of any natural drainage system shall be in full compliance with township stormwater management ordinance. And chapter one oh two, title twenty-five. So what we're saying there is even if the lot is currently has stormwater provisions to be handled by other stormwater controls. That, the development of these lots must.
Manage.
Manage their stormwater in addition to what was previously, um, designed for.
Eric, any issue with some sort of requirement like that living in zoning?
Uh, I don't think so. Because what you would do is add this as part of the conditional use criteria and stuff like that.
Where the conditional exception criteria.
So it ties in the.
It ties in about the.
Where you're putting those uses.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's something you don't often see tied into a zoning section, and I definitely, I don't want this to be something that's waivable. I want, I want it to be part of any sort of exception or conditional use, so.
And design of the stormwater system.
That lives in.
Is, it lives in the stormwater regulations.
But making sure that it actually gets done.
Is in the zone.
Perfect.
Right. Township may require that a landowner or development provide reasonable corrective measures to alleviate any existing off-site drainage problem. Which may be affected by the proposed subdivision or, and or land development. Shall be the responsibility of the landowner or developer to obtain all drainage easements on, over, or through other properties in the township. Its agents, workmen, and employees shall be identified and held harmless from any liability. Facilities for storm drainage should be designed to handle the anticipated peak discharge rate from the property being subdivided as well to handle the anticipated increase in runoff volume that will occur when. Property is at a higher, when all the property at a higher elevation in the same watershed area is fully developed. So there are, the stormwater provisions are more restrictive and should correct or help alleviate stormwater problems other outfit.
I don't, I don't think the verbiage of that paragraph is gonna work.
I think it needs some.
Yeah. Because in theory, I mean, like if somebody developed these are four sections with a new plan in like twenty years. Somebody building here would have had to account for the stormwater here.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want that. I think that's not good.
When in reality, the people who develop.
Develop.
Have to regulate their flow to.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I agree, that, that paragraph.
I, I know, I know what we're trying to fix there, I think we can put some verbiage in there to fix that, but I don't like it the way it's written. Because I, I, the, the problem exists, which is, you know, at like Melrose, where you have the PennDOT system not capable of handling the water. And then it floods out the property. That's a lot different than saying, you know, the part, if somebody developed a park, let's say, they had to account for all the runoff that could ever be built if somebody built the whole mountain.
Yeah, yeah, because it's contributing one.
Right, yeah, so I think it's just tweaking that to make sure it's fixing an existing problem, not saying, well, if everything got developed, you're responsible for that.
Yeah, maybe in paragraph six about, you know. Uh, development may provide reasonable corrective measures, which may be affected by the proposed subdivision. It doesn't, there's like no time, somebody can come down and say, well, this development, six years ago started something and, you know, make, make a claim for that.
What page do you want to see?
Page six, the last.
That paragraph.
You know, there's, there's like a, there's no like time limit on, on this kind of claims. It just can get to be a gray area. Somebody making a claim for something that happened.
Right. I, I think that stormwater, that paragraph is O there. I think, um, we know what we want to, put there, or get in there, I just think it needs, uh.
It's a little TLC right now.
Yep.
It's okay.
At least it's there.
Consensus is right, yeah.
Yeah, the theory's right, we have multiple places around here where stormwater sits or floods or whatever it might be. You know, we know like the stream in the park, all the stones washed into there over the past decade. Yeah, this, there are huge problems that need to address, but the way it's written, in theory, you'd have to take whatever rust commandor develops in a mine. I mean, it's almost too far. So I think it just needs some tailoring to be, you know, fixing, you know, known issues at the time of the ordinance or something. I mean, we do that from time to time with stormwater ordinance, is we set a date. If it's a known problem as of this date, you know, it can be called into remedy as part of this.
I like that kind of idea. Yep.
Tom, is Burke's working on a new stormwater template?
Uh, the state has put out the stormwater.
Yeah, I know the state has, but has Burke started anything?
I don't think so, but. Not that I'm aware of, but, uh, by September or October, uh, all townships, municipalities, and then the state have to, um, pass new. Stormwater warrants is to conform with the new state, uh, regulations.
I can tell you the one in Chester is extremely restrictive.
They've always been.
Yeah, well, they've taken it to a whole nother level as go around, so, um, you know, reducing the ten-year storm to the two-year storm. There were some requirements in there for maintenance, like Astro and stuff for ten, twenty-five years now, instead of twelve to eighteen months. So I, I know there's some really heavy verbiage changes coming for stormwater. Well, down there they really don't have the roof.
Oh, they're regulated already.
So, so what I'd like to do at this time, um, the discussion you've heard this evening has really been review of this first draft of the C one overlay district. Again, it's, it's more or less a, the, even the, the bounds of this overlay district, you know, as, as it's shown on this map, you know, aren't fully yet defined. You know, that, that was one of our early talking points this evening is that we as a planning commission would like the boundaries extended, you know, further along Park Road. Uh, toward the Turkey Hill property. So, again, there's, there's a lot of changes and, and iterations of this that we're gonna be discussing over the coming months.
Yeah, I mean, I think the one thing I do wanna kind of reiterate to everybody here is that some of the feedback you've been giving to us, you can hear is already being considered here. Um, reduction of impervious surface, requirements for open space. Requirements for stormwater to be fixed in areas where. Reduction of impervious surface, requirements for open space, requirements for stormwater to be fixed in areas where it's bad, or that the lot itself has to take care of it instead of going into a regional basin that's not working as it is. Like you said, traffic, that, you know, you can't just come along and do this, we're gonna, I like the HOP thing, if it's a change of use, you have to get it. I mean, I think we need to make sure that's in there. But even just making sure that they do a full study, traffic studies far too often are waived, or they have a truck count or something that you can never hit. Making sure that's a requirement, I think is key.
This limits the residential density too.
Yeah.
Much lower than.
Much, much lower, I mean, that's a good point, I mean, I did quickly look at R four, which we only have one R four spot in the entire township, and that allows ten units per acre. So I mean, here it's six and four, so, you know, it's also limiting how much you can fit on a property.
So I, you know, I took your discussion points of saying, okay, there's gotta be something between low density and high density. We're calling it, you know, medium density, so that, that kind of hits that, that medium density. But, so, building on what you were saying is, I can send you the Word documents if anybody wants to go through it in Word and put in, if you just want to write and, in red, and write on it and send it to me. And we'll incorporate comments for the next strand.
Yeah, I'd like to do like a, a red line document that we can get Tom, and he can answer our questions and comments back to us. And we were throwing a lot at him here tonight. He was throwing a lot at us here tonight as well.
But we can take some time and, and look at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of, a lot of stuff here that needs tweak, but as a basic framework, I think we're taking into account a lot of the concerns that are out there. So there still are some things that aren't really addressed out there, so. I, I'd like to have that chance with a red line document for a good solid time period of free time to really hit it home. And also have the zoning book out in front of me, looking at those other sections you're referencing, because I'm a little leery of some of those sections.
So as we had mentioned earlier, there's no action or motions being made on the information that was presented here this evening. I would like to offer the audience any opportunity for public comment at this time regarding the discussion we've had. Anyone? Sir?
Need an address?
Yes. Yes. Tom Underwood was making a statement, I thought I heard.
Your name, sir?
And Wales from two sixteen to Sophia, Lord. I thought I understand stood you to say that we're looking at this greater density to support health and safety of the community. How is going to a greater density in any way improve the health and safety of the community?
Again, it's, it's, we, we don't, we don't specifically, you know, when we're looking at the overlay district, it doesn't, it's, we're looking at a broader picture. I mean, you, you certainly have your vested rights as a member and a resident at, at Melrose Place. So when we make a statement such as the overall community, it's not, we're not singling out Melrose Place, but rather the greater.
How, how does increasing?
And as, as Jason mentioned.
Matt, Matt, just hold on a second, Tom, can you please explain how that is actually intended? Because it's not, it's, it's, it's a interpretation.
Yeah, the, the regulations are, what, the regulations that we are trying to develop are for to promote and make sure that we're doing it in a way that is taking into account the public safety, public health, general welfare.
Right, such as putting rules in place, you can't just go convert your house into a twenty-unit, you know, complex so that you have to provide for water and sewer so that. Open space for recreation, yes. So that, that's how it takes care of that, it's just a reference.
Mr. Wales, what you, generally, when, whenever an ordinance is adopted, you have a kind of a mission statement. What are the goals of, of the overlay district? And that, that, the language that was being used were, was essentially in the goals statement. You know, when we go further, then we get into the more descriptive and restrictive language. But again, when we, when we start to put this together, you'll notice that those statements are, are in the very beginning, the front end. What are we, what are the goals of what we're trying to create? So it wasn't, you know, the specificity, you know, it's, it's what is the whole package?
It's not like, it's not the goal is to improve health and safety of the community, but I'm trying to understand, understand how.
It is, it is because the, this, all of this overlay district will allow different things to be built. We'll have more control over what is built, how it's developed, how the stormwater, how the track, we'll have more control over it.
Yeah, and another good example is reducing the number of access points along a major artery. That's improving health and safety.
Correct.
Because you're having fewer people making left-hand turns across the road, so that's an example of how you're improving it. To say that, I think the biggest misconception here, first off, is that this is high density, because it's not. Show you a high density, it's about forty-eight units per acre. That's high density, first off. Secondly, adding units to a community doesn't endanger anybody. Adding residential uses to a community doesn't endanger anybody. So to say that adding units or adding residential space to our community is hurting people's safety or health is completely incorrect. It's to make sure there's things for proper sewage, proper water, transportation is accounted for, pedestrian transportation is accounted for, that there's fire code being, you know, taken into account, that you can't just convert a building, which is one of the criteria that's in here, without going through the full land development process. So those are the kind of things it's really referencing.
Had the, had the three lots in front of Melrose Place been developed in the last ten years with the current restrictions, you would have a much higher level of impervious surface, and you'd have even more water problems.
And more traffic.
Than there is now. This will allow for less impervious surface, it allows to control the water.
If they would choose to use the overlay district.
Yes.
And if they could even build something.
Right.
Maybe what they want to build doesn't. And, and the other thing is, there is no plan in front of us for review of any design.
Right.
So we have no clue what anybody would ever propose.
Correct.
And, and to your point of, you know, less stormwater because less impervious surface, residential, no matter how you slice it, is less traffic than commercial. It's just the factual truth of traffic.
Well, I would say that depends on.
No, it doesn't, sir, I'm sorry. Engineering practice states clearly in the roadway design and traffic designs that commercial spaces are higher intensity. Even Penda requires you to have higher highway occupancy permits as soon as you go into a commercial use versus any sort of residential use. So I understand that when you sit there and you see it, you think it's less, and maybe it's because something's not open all day, or whatever it might be. But the factual part of this is that in engineering design, commercial is always seen as higher intensity traffic. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Oh, it does depend on the commercial use and on the residential use. You can see the rival gangs, delivery trucks coming in for residences now, and they'll get an awful lot worse. But anyway, back at the August twenty twenty-one meeting of this board, I had the distinct impression from overseas by the, the board that housing is a cost to the township, and you don't want more housing because you want commercial use. So then in the December twenty twenty-one meeting, when I looked at the minutes, you basically rejected the recommendation of your engineering firm not to go with the overlay. So I'm trying to understand what happened between August and December, that you completely flip-flopped your perspective on residential use for these commercial lots.
I think that is a statement that was not fully used the way it was intended. Residential lots use more resources typically in a community than a commercial lot. They put more strain on things like the school system. Commercial lots don't do that, so they pay tax dollars, but they don't use the school system. Residential properties, you know, they'll use more, maybe because of density, things like fire or ambulance potentially. But at the same point in time, commercial industrial uses can have much bigger episodes, so, you know, it's said that way. So when you do look at residential, it, it is more resource intensive, i.e. cost intensive, than commercial. But it doesn't mean it's not a viable option. And it, it also doesn't mean you're going to get rid of the commercial, commercial is still a viable option in this area. Even as such, one of the big pushes here, and I think when, when Tom gets some of our feedback back, is going to be making it a much more extensive process if you don't want to be including commercial in this. If you're doing something like a mixed use where commercial's still going to be there, that might be something like conditional use, you need the conditions, okay. Where special exception, you have to prove you need these exceptions made for you. And, and one of the things that you need to be able to show is all that. I think the other thing that happened between those two periods of time is that we had a discussion with the school district. And the school district came back and said, well, we have declining enrollment. We don't have a problem with it, all we ask is that if any sort of plan ever comes in for a denser grouping of residents, we'd like to have a chance to review it and be involved in the conversation. So knowing that the school district was saying, well, we have space, we have capacity, and we have declining enrollment, we'd be glad to have some more students, really did change what was being presented to us, because I think if you remember, in those very first meetings, we had people come in and say, well, the school district's against this. Well, that wasn't factually true. So there, there, the biggest consumer of resources that residences have over commercial is the school district, and the school district said, well, we have plenty of capacity for this. It's not going to hurt us at all. If anything, it's going to help us because we could use some more students.
So, I still don't understand, why did you reject your engineer's recommendation?
The engineer's recommendation was based on high density, and the conversation was steered away from high density. And more focus on, okay, what would medium density be evaluated? And would a combined commercial and residential structure use be, be something that could be added? So it was.
We took your recommendation of high density very seriously and said, when you craft something, don't be putting forty units per acre. Come back to us with something that, that's medium, or even, I think, you know, one of the things I want to do is go through the uses, because I think there's some other uses that are in some parts of our town that, you know, could maybe fit in this area that aren't there from, you know, maybe C two or C R or something like that. So I think that's one of the things, it wasn't a rejection of, of what Tom stated, it, it was just asking him to look at a different scope. And, and Eric, I don't, I don't know how familiar you are with this, and Tom, maybe you can give it a, if we don't have anywhere in our township that permits mixed use, and somebody would want to build some mixed use, what happens then?
They'd have to come up for variance to combine two uses.
But if we don't have any, so that, that, that's hardship, correct?
Well, no, not necessarily.
Okay.
They may want to put it somewhere where it doesn't apply, in the middle of a residential zone. It's obviously, there's not a hardship to put it there.
But if it was in a commercial zone?
They'd have to justify that their, that property has a hardship that could not be used as the underlying district commercial.
Okay, so.
And that.
Mix doesn't come in like.
It would come, right, I don't think there is a, that's a use that you have to provide.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is that, is that now becoming, yeah, is it now becoming part of the fair share?
Right, because it is a more and more popular use outlet, and then once something is, you know, I mean, one of the examples out there is community source with gas. And that, that wasn't always, it was always gas stations were mechanics.
Right.
And over the years, it's flipped where you have to allow community source now. So that, that's one where, over time, a use gets more recognized, and then you have to provide a fair share. I don't think we're there yet for mixed use.
I wasn't sure, because I know that's a very common growth one.
It's grown.
And I know, like, one of the uses, Tom, that I, I think when I checked, in, in this, this C one area, the post office hasn't even been actually allowed in the C one yet. It, it's there as a non-conforming use. So if they would want to increase the size of that building, or change the building, or just move within the C one right now, they, they can't.
But I feel your statement of that we flip-flop is inaccurate. We have always, this board has always felt that commercial use is the best return for the township residents in, in tax base. We've always tried to promote that, so.
And there's still plenty of commercial in here that's undeveloped.
Right, we have, we have undeveloped lots of now returning nothing to the township. So we're trying to get something that, to move forward.
And, and our true high artery corridor has tons of commercial available in it that have not been developed for many years.
So one of the existing safety concerns in Melrose Place, but also a number of other places along the corridor that you're looking at, is what would happen in terms of the train derailment. Right now, Melrose Place, there's, there's only one way in and one way out. If the train derails right there, the probability is at least fifty percent.
Emergency access.
That there's going to be no exit. And if, heaven forbid, it should be a toxic or flammable release, the more, the more people, yes, I know there is.
So, so let's just be honest here, let's just stop for a second. Let's just stop for a second.
Please stop.
Your statement is factually incorrect. There is an access, a secondary access lane in and out of your community, so let's just make it very clear.
So let's make it very clear, August of twenty twenty, when there was flooding, the township would not help out Tiny Thinkers by opening that up so that parents could access.
Well, that, that's a separate situation, it, it does exist though. So you can't say it doesn't exist.
But the township won't open it.
That, you can't guarantee that, that's not a true statement. In one situation where you had them not do it, for whatever reason they did it, we were not involved in that conversation. I don't know anything about it. But you do have a secondary means of access, and if somebody would ever in the future develop the farm behind you, you'd even have a third means of access.
So, but something to consider is, the more residential units you add, the longer a period's going to take to evacuate. You could end up with more than one percent of the township residences, residents living in that one place with one exit.
That, that also mathematically doesn't work given the number of residential developments here, that you have one percent of your population.
Well, these are.
You're, I, I understand your concern that you have a main corn, a vigorous egress that your development uses that is directly across from a growingly highly overused rail corridor. I mean, I have to cross that corridor pretty much two to three times a day, some days, if not more than that, even to get back and forth to, to relatives of my own. I mean, that corridor is being stressed to the nth degree, and with trains sitting there stopped, it's, it's only even worse. So I do understand that, you know, it's a heavily used rail corridor, but rail transportation also is, is not governed by a township. But I understand your concern that increased traffic at, what is the intersection there? Sophia? At Sophia and, and Park Road could be a concern. But you also have a very highly, high-traffic-flow intersection there. If I'm correct, and, and you all know better than I do, you have a left turn in and a right de-acceleration lane there, correct, Tom? So that, that is a very advanced intersection. If you would go up a little bit further to what actually are much higher trafficked areas, like at Christina's or up at the Town Center, they actually have a less sophisticated intersection than you do. So I understand that you might sit there a lot.
But they have other ways out of the train derailment.
You're looking at one very specific scenario, and I can understand why, you're a resident of that development, and, and that's a fair point, what would happen if that. But you do have a second means, and if it is of vital health and safety, you know, the fire department, Jim's not here to talk about the fire department. They should be stepping in, the police department should be stepping in and overriding whoever.
I don't recall, I, that may be true, I don't recall that at all, that happening, that situation coming in and them asking to access that. But that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yeah.
I don't know of that, I.
I would tell you that if you're.
I would say if he's going to make that statement, that he should document that statement as who said what and who he talked to.
Right, because I.
And who denied it, rather than just making a statement that's not verified.
Floodwaters were coming across.
Who, who, who documented?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a chain there, isn't it?
Yes.
It was the owner of Tiny Thinkers was trying to manually clear readings to try to improve the stormwater situation. And mentioned, she called the township, and the township said, well, there's nothing I can do.
Well, now, you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, I don't think that.
How did you get from cleaning grates to not opening the?
She was trying to make a way so that parents could get to their kids.
So was that specific, was that specific request made?
Well, certainly the township should know if you.
Well, I, I think, I think, and we understand your concerns of, of, but that's, that's. But that's, that's a whole different issue. But we, we will, like I said, any changes of use, any increase, decrease of traffic requires a traffic study. It also requires the HOP permit to be reevaluated by PENDOT. There are many safety nets along this way. The only thing that we can't require is the NTSB or any of those federal government agencies who govern rail traffic to modify their railroad. That's, that's way, that'd be like us telling, you know, Texas Eastern that they can't run their gas lines. But, but you are going into a very unique situation. We can understand we have a concern, but that's not something that can be handled by any community.
But it's something that communities should have a plan of what they're going to do.
Yeah, I think this should be brought up to.
In a hurry.
And we can address that with the road crew and make sure.
And our emergency management.
And I was gonna say, and the emergency management person, I think, needs to have a conversation on this situation and find out what actually went off.
And we, and we can follow up on that.
That, that's more about like, we have to talk to people in the township, and that has to be corrected so it doesn't happen again. It's not really something that can be dealt with in a zoning or, or land development here. Is there anything else you have to do?
I do, I have a question for your engineer. With the amount of water that drains from the mountain into Melrose Place with current DEP requirements, would that require a dam versus a traditional detention pond be built? A dam would be built with that, I think it's over a hundred acres that drains down.
There's nowhere near a hundred acres, right now.
Well.
Oh, yes, there is.
Would, would there be a requirement for a dam? I don't believe that would be the case.
Can you check that?
Would have to check that, but I do not believe that a dam will be placed across there. But you can check that.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
DEP regulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else? Any other comments regarding the overlay district?
I have a few comments.
Yeah?
South Fullinga, my listen. I'm the attorney for the Fullingas here. I do want to thank you guys. I want to thank especially Mr. Underwood, taking the time. I think it's a very comprehensive document. Actually, it might be too restrictive to even allow us to do anything that we want, listening to it. This is the first time I'm actually listening to it. I don't have it before me, but just hearing what I'm hearing. That being said, though, I do appreciate the processes that you guys are going through. And I do appreciate the questions and concerns, because I think that's the way this should operate. I do want to address some of the things that have been mentioned, just because I think there are some.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just preface you. The only things I want to hear you addressing are specifically to this overlay district and not refuting any sort of plan that's not in front of us anymore.
Absolutely.
Because you have withdrawn that plan.
Absolutely. So I agree with, the one thing I did want to mention was the last paragraph in page six. You guys sort of talked about that. Without reading it, it's kind of hard for me to sit there and think about it, but I do think that that first part does enough. The second part does seem like a gray area.
I think, I think.
But I know you guys kind of look at it.
That needs work.
Yeah. The other thing I do want to mention is, I do think with the restrictive language you've put in there, anything that is developed will provide a lot less traffic and issues than what's permitted under C one. Currently under C one, you are allowed a sheet, you're allowed mobile home parking, you're allowed a strip club, you're allowed adult book theater. So some of the concerns that people have, I would just encourage them to maybe see what's permitted. And maybe this isn't such a bad thing as they may think due to some of the misconceptions that have been put out there on social media and, you know, in-person communications.
I appreciate it, but I think, you know, let's just let that one lie. I do, I do, Tom, one of the things maybe we should do as an exercise is a, a math exercise to show what the track account would be on a commercial, you know, maybe the existing commercial building. Maybe just pull the file for what the strip mall was, but also then see what something for a townhouse would be. Just so we can show people what that actually equates to. Because I think it's a very difficult thing unless it's you, me, or, or maybe Matt, who are somewhat familiar with it, really.
Because what we look at, folks, is, is development, it's car, it's trips per day. So how many trips per day, and it's.
A house really is one in, one out for two, two people. So it's four, usually maybe six, where commercial is by hour and by square footage. So I think just having something, so when we have this conversation, the next time we can help explain that topic a little better, would, would just be a, a good visual to bring. Eric, I know you're new to this. Is there any thoughts or feedback you would like?
I think just to that one, and maybe even the strip mall, it converge into what's something else that's allowed in C one.
Well, I mean, we have some recent stuff that was done in this corridor that would have given us traffic studies or HOP permits. So, you know, maybe.
What, what it could be, I made a couple of examples of what it is today.
Maybe even like what Stony Creek submitted, something like that, just so we have a couple of reference points for everybody.
I mean, this, this is the process you should take, is that you guys hash out the issues, you listen to the public, hash out the issues for this, and then, then you set it up supervisors to see if they agree with you or not. So that's really, I mean, this is the whole purpose of, of why you guys are here. This is the great start of the process.
Thanks. Andrew? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Randy?
Outside.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, folks. Thanks for coming out.